I don't know what, yeah.
Same as always, except I don't know if you have to do the.
We'll start the city council meeting in December twenty first, two thousand and sixteen. And we're gonna do the pledge. And everything today? No? You, no, no? Okay, so we'll just open to public discussion at this time, provided to the public to address the city council on items not on the agenda. If anybody wishes to speak upon being recognized, please come forward and state your name and address before proceeding into your comments. Seeing nobody?
Roll call.
We'll pull, pull, close that, and then roll call.
Councilmember Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Jake Parks.
Here.
Leo Zuber.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mike Rastusia.
President.
Mayor Dean Ucker.
Here, I'm trying to speed things up.
I didn't see that on the agenda.
I, it's not on the agenda, see, so I'm, I gotta be retrained. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay. First off, we have a discussion items. Site access agreement, Tony Missland donation indoor soccer facility for discussion and action. Is this you, Kevin?
Yeah, I, I can start, and Mr. Missland is here, and also Chad DeGraff, who is the contractor he's been working with. So they could add anything that I missed. But as you know, Mr. Missland has donated a number of items to the city, including water features at, at Missland Sports Park, softball fields, concession stand, and most recently, the dining area in the water tower. And if you recall, as we did the dining area in the water tower, that was a hundred percent donation by, by Mr. Missland. We provided a site access agreement for him to go in and provide that donation to the city. So that's a similar arrangement that is being proposed with his most recent proposed donation, which is an indoor soccer facility. He's proposing to provide, it's one single synthetic turf field, obviously indoors, does have bleachers, restrooms, and then all the necessary landscaping and ADA access that would be associated. The location is planned to be located on the west side of the most western parking lot, the Paver parking lot, that is currently at the sports park, pretty much right on the, just on the west side of that access road. There's a figure in your staff report that, that shows that. One thing I wouldn't mention is that this location is currently not within city limits. The city did consider annexation of this probably about ten years ago, and at that time, the city council decided not to move forward with the annexation. So we have talked to, to LAFCO about this, and they, they're suggesting that we do an out-of-service area agreement to provide services to this, and staff is suggesting that we do move forward with annexation. Just the annexation in itself could take eight to twelve months to, to complete that process, if, if not a little bit longer. So in our discussions with Mr. Missland, he would like to move forward with this project earlier than that. So in order to do that, it would be an out-of-service area agreement.
Could that be changed at a later point in time?
Excuse me?
Could it be changed to be annexed?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that what we're doing, we're moving forward, you're proposing moving forward both at the same time?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Is there any parts of the two that overlap? You know, like if you do, like, one set of documents, it takes care of both paths, type of thing?
No.
It's two different?
Yeah, we would initially do the out-of-service area agreement, and then once that's complete, Mr. Missland would be able to go out and, and construct the, the facility. And, and then in the meantime, in the meanwhile, to, in order to do the annexation, we have to complete the municipal services review. So we would need to go through that process, complete that document, and then work with LAFCO on, on the annexation. As far as the city's commitment in it, it would, it would predominantly be the, the review of the plans. The planning department would complete the environmental review. The one part of this, we believe, we are gonna be paying habitat mitigation fees. Those fees are estimated to be five to ten thousand dollars. We're expecting to be on the, more towards the five thousand dollar side. But those would be a requirement of, of the city. With that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any, any questions.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Zuber?
I have a couple. I wanna go back to this out-of-service area agreement. And my concern is coming off of what just happened in Lathrop. Have we talked to the county about the fact that we're gonna put an improvement on property in their jurisdiction? And then when it comes to our jurisdiction, what are we gonna do? Well, there's gonna be a tax agreement. If we annex that property now with nothing on it, the only thing they can ask for is the property tax. We put a building on there that's generating money. Now they're gonna say, that was there before you annexed it, so we want that money too. I think we need to talk to them ahead of time and make sure everybody's on the right page with this.
I think what was different in the Lathrop example, because I worked on that, was, that was in an area of the county where the tax sharing agreement, the master tax sharing agreement that they had, didn't cover annexations where there were existing uses that were out there, that were already generating a million dollars in sales annually. So it was a little bit of a unique situation. There was an existing use out in the county. It was gonna be brought in with the, the new territory that the new use was gonna go on. But because it was generating more than a million dollars in, in sales, it was a big sales tax generator, and they needed a separate property tax sharing agreement for that. It was an exception to the existing agreement. In this case, all, this, this territory is covered by our property, our existing master tax sharing agreement, and there wouldn't be any unique negotiations, because there's nothing out there that currently generates that, that kind of sales or sales tax.
Is there something in the existing agreement that sets some kind of limit?
Not for our, not for our, not for our tax sharing agreement. We have a separate tax sharing agreement than Lathrop, and it doesn't have that provision about the million dollars in, in gross sales. And there's nothing in this proposed area of annexation that would generate that kind of gross sales. See, i- i- in the, in the Lathrop example, there's a, there's a big trucking facility.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
You know what they are. They generate more than, more than a million dollars in, in gross sales revenue every year, and that in turn spins off, what, ten thousand dollars in property tax, maybe something like more than that. And so because of that, the master tax sharing agreement between Lathrop and the county has an exception for those cases. And if you're gonna annex that territory into the city, and that money now would go to the city, they need to have a special agreement entered into where the county gets some of that money back. We, this is a bare land annexation that would happen in the future here, and there are no similar uses like that Papey Trucking Facility in the path of our annexation. So our existing master tax sharing agreement would cover the annexation when it comes in.
And the fact that that building is there?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and this is not a building, this is not a building that's gonna generate sales tax. It's gonna be a public use building essentially. And so it may generate revenue, but not, but not sales tax per se. So it, it's probably not gonna be, it, it, probably, it won't be an issue because of our master tax sharing agreement, which is different. Ripon and Escalon have different tax sharing agreements than the rest of these cities in the county. So the reason we're doing an out-of-area service agreement, which is a LAFCO term, LAFCO concept, is because, because until we annex it to the city, we ordinarily can't provide services to it, so we have to do that first. Then we'll annex, and that tax, and that out-of-area service agreement will go away, because now it will be part of the city.
I understood that part. I just don't, didn't want.
I, I understand.
To get into argument later with the county, because we changed what was out there between the time we started and the time we finished.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, go ahead.
But to your point about communicating with the county, that is our intent, though, to, to talk with them and communicate about this project and what we're doing, to make sure we're not missing anything. So that is ongoing.
The other question, concern I have is operation and operational costs. It's one thing to build something. The other problem comes up when you have to run it, utilities and all kinds of stuff. Have we taught, thought about, about the impact of that on us?
We've had some, some brief conversations about that, and I, I think where we started with those conversations was about how, how is it gonna be ran? You know, is it gonna be something that the, the city is gonna run and run leagues out of there? And obviously, if you do that, you are gonna be paying the cost of electricity to, to clean it and, and replace the synthetic turf, which is probably gonna be one of the biggest upcoming costs that you're gonna have with that facility. Or the other option is, is to find someone to run it for you. So you lease it out to somebody, and, and they would actually run the leagues out of there, and they would do all the maintenance. So we, we've talked about those two different options. We haven't explored it much more than just, just talking about it. But, you know, one of the biggest costs, and I, I think from our standpoint, one of the concerns, is obviously the cost of the turf in ten years out and how do you pay for that? It's probably, when it's time, or at least in today's dollars, it's probably about sixty thousand dollars to do something like that. So however, however we decide to go forward and operate that, I think what's gonna be important is that we set up some sort of sinking fund that allows us to put money away, so in ten years or whenever that needs to be replaced, we just might better replace it and, and keep it as, as a, a A-plus facility.
Yeah, 'cause I went over and looked at the one in Manteca. Everything's fine, except the plain surface. And I, the guy I talked to said he thought that had been in existence for about ten years. Speaking for myself, I would not want people going into a facility with turf like that and say it belonged to this city, 'cause it's awful.
Yeah, I, I agree. They have the same issue on, on some of the, the baseball fields, but they're very large costs. So when it's time to replace, I think everyone tries to find every way to patch it that, that you can, but it just, it, it creates more seams and, and more tripping hazards. So, you know, I, I think as you go forward and you set up a fee structure, the fee structure every time someone uses it should have a certain amount of money that goes in that sinking fund. And we, we have funds set up here with, within the city, like the CNG station, for example, we have a very similar situation. So every year, at the end of the year, we transfer certain money in, in the part that's reserved for replacement of capital into a fund that, that is there as equipment needs to get replaced.
All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Rastusia?
Thank you. I have two questions, and that was one of my questions, and you answered most of that, whether or not you put together a budget for this and what the maintenance would be. So we don't need to belabor that. You answered Leo's question. I can ask probably four or five more questions on top of that, but that's not important. You guys were looking at that. The, the thing that struck me kinda strange, I don't know anything about soccer, and I should, I, I did some research, but unfortunately, my stuff didn't download on my pad. That's the problem with some technology. Twenty thousand feet, to me, seems awfully small. Football fields, thirty thousand feet. I mean, is this regulation? Are these, is?
It's different.
Okay.
It, it's smaller. This is about a hundred and seventy feet by eighty feet.
Yeah.
Quite a bit smaller than a, a regular size outdoor soccer field facility, but it's a different type of game. My, my son actually played when, when he was young, and they have walls in there, so there's no out of bounds, and you could essentially pass it off the walls, and it's, it's a much faster game, so.
It's kinda like indoor football size.
Yeah.
Is what it's like. Yeah, okay, that's what I kinda thought it was. Okay, so those are the two questions I had. The maintenance was the most critical of the questions that I had, but we talked about that, so.
And I think as we move forward, that, we, we, staff will be bringing back budgeting, and as part of the budget process, what, what that would look like.
Well, and you'll be able to figure out what kind of leagues you have, how often it'll be used, and generate some revenues like you do on your baseball thing out there, and maybe you will fill, will find somebody that actually will take ownership to it, like the baseball does. So I think it's a great deal. Thank you, Mr. Missland.
Mr. Parks?
Kevin, I don't know if you can answer this, or Kai, you can, but kinda building off what Leo said. So what is the average life of those fields?
Most of the field turf or turf infield's out there have a warranty of approximately eight years.
Eight years.
A lot of them, if, if you get limited use, they'll go fifteen or twenty. We, we've seen ten to twelve. It, it needs replacement. I think Councilman Zuber mentioned that the facility he checked out at Manteca needed replacement, and that's approximately ten years old. So the, the warranty's usually eight, but it, it'll need to be replaced. They've done it in sections, worn sections, but, you know, it's usually a ten to twelve year lifecycle.
And how much?
It could go long.
So, so with that eight years, how much activity are they assuming on the field? Are they assuming three games a day, three days a week? Did they, do they give you any of those parameters?
I'm not familiar with exactly, but it's my understanding they use it multiple nights during the week and weekends.
Okay.
As far as the number of games, I don't have that figure.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I think that's gonna be the, the big determining factor of this. And, and indoor soccer is a very, it's very popular. I know that that Manteca facility is widely used. So the, so eight years to me seems like it's, it's a stretch, especially once it starts to go and build up. And if it's something to where people at the city of Manteca, if they can now gravitate towards a better location with newer facilities and, and newer amenities, then you're really gonna see it take off. Yeah. And so I just wanna make sure that we have a full grasp of, yeah, it's eight years, but in actuality, it's more like four. We need to be planning on replacing that. 'Cause as Councilman Zuber said, I don't think we want it to get to the stage where it is at, where Manteca's is at, so.
Well, when I talked to the guy, I asked him that, and he said in the winter, they opened the facility, the park, he called it, at four. The soccer building is opened at six, and it's used from six to eleven every night. And then it's used more than that on the weekends.
Yeah.
So if this thing works, it's gonna get a lot of use, and I can tell you, from looking at that thing, patching those fields is a joke. There will come a point at which it's gonna be worn in places, and you need to fix, you need to replace it. You don't cut a hole in it and put another one in there, because now all you end up with is ridges.
Yeah.
It's, it's bad. That building is a nice building. It's a nice facility. The field is terrible.
I would only have one question, unless anybody else. What would be the potential of doing more than just soccer in this structure? Volleyball, basketball? Archery?
You know, there is potential, but you would, you would have to bring in, you know, if it's volleyball nets and flooring, if it's basketball flooring and, and the basketball. And then you would have to have storage locations for all of that. And it's, it's rather intensive. I, I'm sure you've been to a professional sports ga, they don't leave, you know, the floors in there, but they've got a significant crew that, that puts it together and tears it down when they're done. And so the potential is here, there, yes, but it's unlikely that we'd have the manpower and the wherewithal to, to do multiple things in there because of.
Hey, Ted can get anything.
Of the maintenance of it.
Well, I think the biggest problem is you'd have to roll that floor up.
Yeah. Yeah.
And if you don't roll up, roll it up as a unit, all you've now done is, is sped up the deterioration of the floor. 'Cause if you take it out in sections, soon as you put it back, the two are, once you do that once, they're never gonna fit there again. You know, and it, I just, you might be able to do something around the edges, but the way that one's set up, they got tables and benches and all kinds of stuff. And, and the, the, I don't know what you call it, but the field, the edges of the field itself, my God, it'd take you a, a day to take that.
It would be difficult.
Yeah.
So basically, it's not feasible, but, right?
No, I don't think so.
If you're gonna do anything like that, it would have to be a, a sport that uses synthetic turf. Like if it's flag football or another sport that you don't have to roll up the turf, I, I think you could do something or have options. But rolling it up is gonna be very difficult.
Well, maybe Mr. Missland would be interested in making it like five times as big as it is. Okay. Do we, do we have any, any more questions?
No.
Do you want direction?
So.
So are we being asked to approve that agreement that's in here?
Yes.
So. Somebody gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agreement.
I'll second that.
Passes five oh, and moving on?
Well, the one question, or request I would make is that as this thing moves forward and you start getting a clearer picture of operational costs, I'd like periodically, I just don't want this thing to become another subject of conversation like Missland Park itself was when I first got elected to the council. Where you've told people it's gonna be a nice thing, and, and the potential is that it'll pay for itself, and it clearly wasn't. It, it, we fixed it, but there for a while, that thing was not a popular topic around town, and I don't want that to happen with this, if at all possible.
Yeah, I wrote that down. We will, we will work on a, on a budget and, and a plan of how it's gonna be operated.
Okay. Okay, we'll go on to discussion item one B, congestion mitigation and air quality grant project consideration. And Kevin, is that you also, or no?
I'll take that one, Dean, thank you. So the San Joaquin Council of Government is soliciting grant applications under the CMAC program. The intent of the grant is to improve air quality through transportation projects and relieve traffic congestion. There's currently twenty-three point sixty-five million available in funding for San Joaquin County through the CMAC program. The city of Ripon has received CMAC grant funding in the past, including the two thousand and fourteen parking ride, parking ride project, and a portion of the new CNG refuse truck, which will be delivered later this year. You can see in the staff report, under the first paragraph, there's a list of examples of eligible projects for the CMAC program. Staff, we, we evaluated two eligible potential projects, including a sidewalk project on Stockton Avenue between Second Street and Doak. The scope of that is to fill in areas without sidewalk, replace the sidewalk where it's out of compliance as far as access issues go, and then install handicap ramps. This, this will kinda close a gap, a major gap, as far as the pedestrian access on the south side of the city, and encourage more pedestrian traffic, resulting in less vehicles on the roads. Second project is the installation of a traffic signal at the intersection of Hoff and Colony Road. This would improve traffic movements throughout the intersection, which should result in lower air emissions from vehicles. And that's, that's the off-ramp in between McDonald's and Chevron there. The two tables, shown the, the staff report for the funding. The first one, the Stockton Avenue project, the, the total project cost is five hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This is our estimate at this time. Two hundred and eighty thousand of that would be becoming, coming from our street and road fund, and our grant request would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You, you don't have to contribute any funds, any local funds for these projects, but it does make it much more competitive. The, the way the scoring for these grants works is, it's based on the amount of CMAC money you're putting in, and how cost effective that is for the amount of dilutions or air emissions that you're reducing. The second project, the Colony and Hoff Traffic Signal Project, has a total cost of six hundred and sixty thousand. The CMAC request would be four hundred thousand for that, and two hundred and sixty thousand of that, of the city's local funds would be from the transportation fund. So staff is proposing at this time just to submit one project, and that would be the Stockton Avenue Sidewalk Project. And we are requesting council's authorization to move forward with the application process. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Zuber?
Based on what you just said about what the scoring criteria is, it would seem to me we'd have a better chance of getting the money if we put in the stop the traffic signal project instead of the sidewalk project. Because it, from what I read the list, it come, it does more of the kinds of things that are on the list than putting in a half a mile of sidewalk. And besides for not improving the road either, I, I, my preference would be to either do them both and see what happens, or if we can only do one, my preference would be to do the signal lights out at that intersection. That thing needs help, beside, just, just needs help, because you got people going on the freeway, off the freeway, trying to cross, making a left turn, realizing they went the wrong way. cross, making a left turn, realizing they went the wrong way and having to come back.
Sure.
That's my preference.
Yeah, yeah, it'd really be up to the council. We could, um, we could move forward with that one as a priority, and if we were able to get the second one in, um, we can move forward with that one as well.
It's costing us the same amount of money, but I think we're solving a bigger problem if we could get that intersection signaledized.
Vice Mayor Resticcio.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna piggyback that comment too, because when I read it and I understand the scoring and all that, cause we've done CMAC for a long time, it, it's hard for me to understand how you would score putting in sidewalks, cause it's not like we're eliminating cars. People that are walking an hour are gonna continue walking. We're not gonna have more people walking and taking cars off. So, I didn't understand how that would score higher actually than the light, cause apparently lights do score fairly high. So, I had the same comments and questions, so I'll piggyback Councilman Zubor's comment, and I think that's probably a better project. I think it would score higher, but I don't know the scoring other than the criteria.
The one thing, I, I agree with both those comments, and that's the way the CMAC program is always operated. One thing I heard, and this came from the county, is that COG, in the scoring committee, is looking a little different how they score sidewalk projects. I don't know what that's gonna look like at the end of the day, if it's really gonna help that much or not, but, um, just to add that to the conversation. I don't disagree with what you're saying, um, but they are, normally sidewalk projects score very low. Apparently, they're looking at changing that. I don't know how much more they're gonna increase or not, uh, but it'll be interesting how it comes out and, um...
Who does the scoring and, can we get that criteria? Who, who does the scoring actually?
They, uh, they have, they set a committee up of all the representatives who essentially put projects in.
Oh, so it'll be a lot of city representation, county representation?
Yes.
Do we know what the criteria is? You said it's changed. Do we know what that is?
Have you seen the new criteria for sidewalks?
I've seen the, I've seen the scoring criteria, the overall scoring criteria. Um, it, it, the sidewalk project would score slightly lower. Um, it, it really just depends on how much you're doing and how much CMAC money you're putting in, um, for it. Um, and that's kinda the balance that you have to look at. I think the, the request that we were having was a little higher for the signal project because it potentially would score higher and you'd be able to ask for a little bit more.
There may be, there may be certain cases where sidewalks may rate higher in certain areas. I, you know, if I had to score that, I don't know where we improve our air quality on that particular sidewalk project. So, I, again, I'm just trying to look at it objectively from what they would look at and see what kind of air quality improvement there'd be on a sidewalk there. I don't see it as well as the light personally.
Why couldn't you add the street improvement at the same time? Seems like it makes way more sense to me. The money's not available for that?
No.
And we don't have enough money to kick in to do that? I mean, that, I mean, to me, it just seems crazy to put this nice sidewalk in and you got a road that's, you can't even drive down, especially in my truck. I gotta go like five miles an hour down that road.
Initially, we had a, a grant to, to help pay for that. We're working towards, uh, completing that project. Uh, the grant has since gone away, um, so the, the project has essentially been tabled.
Well, and wasn't there CMAC money attached to that project, and we moved it out to do the signals?
Correct.
At Fulton and River?
That was a part, portion of the RSTP funding.
Okay.
That was moved out. So, there still is an allotment, I believe, eight, around eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, set aside for that project.
I mean, it makes sense to me. If you're gonna put sidewalks in, why, you're out there tearing up the whole street, you know, messing up traffic?
Already.
Well, yeah. One thing about it, you wouldn't have to tear it up, cause it already tore up. But it just makes sense. If you're gonna do a project like that, why wouldn't you do it all at one time?
But that's a different bucket of money.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's why you'd say if you did that and then you had the money to do it, it makes way more sense. And it would probably be more cost-effective too, you would think. You know?
Well, I don't mind submitting them both, and if they both get picked, or because of whatever happens, the sidewalk gets picked over the signals, that's fine. I just don't like the idea of putting the sidewalk project in ahead of the traffic signal project. I think that traffic signal does more of what CMAC is intended to do, and it's not like we don't need it, so.
Right. And that's why we wanted to talk to city council and understand their priorities and James goes and, you know, participates in the scoring committee.
Are you participating in that?
Um, I, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm on that committee, uh, this, this round. I was in two thousand and fourteen, so. I'm not sure that, uh, S.J. Cog has finalized that committee yet, so.
Mr. Parks?
To me, it, it's really gonna boil down to the scoring system, because quantitatively, there's really no difference with the signal lights or the sidewalks. Because with the signal lights, you're not taking any, um, you're not improving the air quality at all. Yeah, you might be improving the traffic at all, but you're not necessarily improving the air quality of it. You're still gonna have the same number of vehicles on the road. You're still, they're still going to be traveling the same patterns. So, to me, it, it's really gonna boil down to the scoring system and, and how they wait each one. You said that they wait, they look at sidewalks a little bit differently than, um, traffic signals.
Yeah, there's, there's different methodology, methodologies for them. Um, and the sidewalks, you, you're essentially saying that people are now gonna get out and, and walk and take, take vehicles off the road by using the sidewalks. Um, the traffic signal methodology is you're, you're increasing the, or you're improving the traffic flow, the, the movements through the signal. You're eliminating the stop and go, which you'll have if, at a four-way stop. So, at a, with a, with a stop sign, you're gonna have every car going to that intersection stopping and going for a number of ti, you know, any number of times. Uh, with the signal, if you, if you're catching a green light, you're eliminating that stop and go, which, uh, improves the traffic congestion and therefore...
And the air.
Right, and I could see that at Pellandale, but not necessarily at Jacktown, where, I mean, I've, the worst I've ever seen that is you're maybe two or three cars deep. So, it, the, the effects are, are gonna be minimal. It, it's not like it's a, you know, you're getting, you know, six, seven digits or six digits worth of cars through that particular intersection. So, to me, I mean, I'm with Councilman Zubor, both projects to me are, are the same. But are these projects that, um, we're taking and we're kind of, because there's this opportunity for grants, we're kind of going, okay, this is what we can do? Or, because I remember earlier this last year, you had a list of different projects that you were working on and kinda their different stages and where they're at and our timeframes for thinking. Do none of those projects, either for scope or cost, kinda fit into the, these, what CMAC's looking for?
Yeah, I think the only project in the CIP list, or the CIP, um, program that we had was the Stockton Avenue project, which this would kinda supplement that with the sidewalk portion.
Okay.
Um, and then this other, other traffic signal project is just, um, something that falls right into...
It's just an opportunity for it.
Exactly.
Okay, okay.
One other thing, just to, to keep in mind, um, as you think about your priorities and how you wanna direct staff with this, um, the traffic signal, that is an AB sixteen hundred project, so it is included in the developer fees and, and part of the public facilities plan. So, you know, the, the future funding of that is, is through the AB sixteen hundred fees, whereas the, the sidewalk project, that would be funded through street and roads. So, just, just something to keep in mind as you, as you think about your priorities.
I mean, that, that to me really actually makes a difference, because if that's the case, I would rather keep the street and roads monies for improving streets and roads rather than developing it towards sidewalks. So, if that's the case, and we can use these and we're not necessarily having to take in as many developmental dollars to fund this project, I would rather put that one ahead of the line than the, the sidewalks type of thing. I, I, I hope I'm making sense there, so, yeah.
But that's a good point. Let me ask a question to that, though. Your AB sixteen hundred money, you're not gonna go out and bond that.
No.
So, you're gonna wait till you accumulate it. So, that light may not have them for fifteen years, cause you may not generate enough money. CMAC money comes in right away.
Yeah.
So, what do we want done first, I guess, would be the question. I mean, that's a good point, but the AB sixteen hundred's gonna take forever to get that thing put in place. This could have it done quicker.
Right.
Ready for a motion?
Yep, so make the open for...
I'll make them, unless there are, if there are any more questions, I'm gonna make a motion that the staff endeavor to submit an application for both, but if time or available resources or whatever limits the ability to do that, then they put, give priority to the, uh, traffic signal project at Hoff and Colony Road.
Second.
Passes the five oh, oh.
Five oh oh.
Five oh oh. So, moving on to discussion item one C, accept the donation from Diamond Pet Foods for the purchase of a unmanned aircraft system to be operated by the police department. Donation of ten thousand dollars. Um, is that Chief?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council. And in the recent months, uh, the Ripon Police Department was, uh, approached by Diamond Pet Foods and, uh, have, has offered, uh, to donate, uh, ten thousand dollars, uh, towards an unmanned aircraft systems program, uh, for the department to operate. Uh, tonight, we are asking that the city council accept the donation of the monies, uh, allow us to proceed further with the purchase of the equipment, uh, to operate a program, uh, to submit, uh, information to the FAA, uh, to allow us permissions to implement the program, and then after acceptance by the FAA, to implement the program and to start using it, uh, within the city. And I have two, or I'm sorry, three of our designated pilots, uh, present that would be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
You think Mr. Meese is qualified to fly a plane?
He, he's not selected to operate the, the UAS. He's here for another item.
Any questions? Mr. Zubor?
Jake's up.
Oh, he's gone. That was...
Can you give me an idea of why you want this and what you're gonna do with it? Because given some of the stuff that's in the news lately about drones, I'm not sure I want the city of Ripon splattered all over the Thursday night news because we did something silly.
Yes, uh, I, I can cover some of those, uh, incidents where the, uh, uh, application of a, of a drone or UAS would be beneficial to not only the police department, but our, our citizens, and, uh, also we'd be working in partnership with our, uh, local fire district in, uh, responding to critical incidents such as, uh, fires, whether they be structural or rural, uh, missing or lost persons. Uh, like we use the powered parachute, uh, years ago for doing search and rescue missions, uh, along this Dallas River, uh, also missing and lost juveniles, uh, either two or, uh, coming from schools. Uh, also, uh, after securing search warrants, uh, for, uh, searching property or homes, um, using them as a, a force multiplier and, uh, setting perimeters and so forth. Uh, we understand that there's a, a huge concern over privacy, and unlike the powered parachute, the, the UAS program would not be used to assist patrol in their normal duties on a daily basis. The UAS program would be strictly used based on critical incidents that would need to be responded to, such as, uh, uh, something occurring on a property of Diamond Pet Food or another local business where they have a, a bird's eye view would be beneficial to, uh, have first responders, uh, approach, uh, assess the situation and react to what's occurring on the ground. Um, we'd also be using, uh, COAs with the FAA, which would, uh, limit to strict training areas. We'd be using city property, uh, down towards the, uh, the sewer ponds and the Ripon Police Department range to conduct our initial training, and that would be our, our designated training spot, uh, if, if so approved by the FAA. Uh, it wouldn't be something that would be, uh, uh, launched and practiced or, or being trained on at our local parks, uh, over residential neighborhoods and so forth. I don't know if that kinda answers?
It does. Would the ordinance that we have in place play into this, like with the height limitations and all that stuff? Or do you guys operate outside of all that?
The, the current, uh, drone ordinance that we have for public, or I'm sorry, for civilian use, does not cover public use in the, uh, use of, um, during, uh, a critical incident or, uh, after obtaining search warrants and so forth. Uh, if you're not using it, if you're, uh, functioning as a training exercise or any type of, uh, free use, uh, it would comply with that ordinance. But if it was, uh, designated for a critical incident or some other, um, use for, uh, first responders, it'd be exempt.
We're gonna use these for free use, is, to use your words, or are they gonna be limited to critical incidents?
It's, it's gonna be limited, other than the training, uh, which we need to initially get, uh, some hours under our belts for the pilots to be able to, uh, maneuver the aircraft, get comfortable with the, uh, the flight controls. Uh, the current policy that we have internally for the police department on the usage, uh, has, it has to be approved by a supervisor, which at this point in time would be sergeant and above, would have to actually, uh, authorize the usage or the launch of the aircraft prior to it, uh, being in flight. Uh, we'd also keep, just like a regular aircraft, you'd keep documented, uh, logs of flight, uh, training, uh, and also we'd have that paper documentation that we would keep, but also the, uh, software that each of the UAS, uh, systems has, would also do a, uh, topographer, uh, uh, digital, uh, flight pattern, uh, documented, uh, for later use to compare what we currently are tracking, uh, with the pilot paper-wise, then we can go back and verify it through the software programs to make sure that we are flying when we're supposed to be flying, we're not flying when we're not supposed to be, and we can also track the, uh, the height, the, uh, the distance, uh, the general location and the speed of the aircraft that's flying.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Resticcio.
Thank you. Glad you said Meese can't fly, cause I can just see this drone sit out and sitting out of my office window, you know, looking at me. So, the question I have, so this is a ten thousand dollar donation. We talked about there's gonna be additional equipment and things like that, they need to get bought. So, there's additional capital expenditure beyond this. Now, how about on an operating basis? Has, have you put together a budget, what it's gonna cost to actually operate this drone?
We, we have an approximate figures. Um, Modesto Police Department came down and did a demonstration for us, and we, uh, one of their pilots and, uh, systems administrators actually lives here in town. So, we've had o- ongoing dialogue with their department regarding batteries, uh, extra, uh, parts and pieces for the drones, replacement, uh, parts such as the propellers and props and so forth. Uh, we're estimating that it would be somewhere between zero to five hundred dollars a year for maintenance costs, uh, just on the extra parts and pieces. Um, the batteries last approximately a hundred cycles. Uh, the initial proposal has extra batteries already, uh, purchased. There's also about seven hundred dollars left out of that money that would go towards any contingencies that would arise should, uh, should extra parts and pieces need to be, uh, purchased.
So, the ten thousand dollars covers all the capital expenditure?
Yes.
And then it's gonna be five hundred dollars a year, which you would put in your budget? You know, I, I tell you, I, I've seen some of these things, you know, when you watch, you know, kinda these police deals, and you get to go places that a person can't, a, a cop can't go. You can see things that are important that a cop can't see, that saves lives. I think it's a good idea, as long as it's used properly. I'm, I was kidding about looking at my office window, but, but as long as the costs are covered, um, I don't see a problem.
We, we also, uh, just as a, as a side note, uh, we've also checked into additional insurance. If, uh, if our, uh, city, uh, insurance group, uh, requests additional insurance coverage, uh, just like the powered parachute, it would cost roughly, uh, eight hundred dollars a year to have a million dollar li, liability insurance policy on that. So, there's some other things that we can do if, if needed. Uh, I'm not sure it is gonna be needed or required at this point, uh, but that's something else we can do to make sure that the city's covered if there's anything catastrophic that happens with the aircraft.
One last question. How big is this?
Actually, uh, IT Administrator, uh, Brandon has his own, uh, UAS, which would be, uh, a model of, of what it would be.
That small?
Yes.
Ten grand?
Well, it buys two of them. Plus the cameras and everything, as I remember.
Yes.
Turn the camera around, okay?
Why does it have...
Are you afraid you'll break it?
...pervert in your salon there?
If I may also note, we have another organization that, uh, may, may participate in the program. Uh, at this point in time, they are considering donating one of the... Uh, at this point in time, they are considering donating one of the drones. Uh, if, at this point in time, we don't have to spend that money that Diamond Pet Food has donated on one of the drones, we will put that in a fund to help purchase other items at a future date and time for this program.
I had a gentleman in my office the other day that said that he wants to get involved in this. Has he talked to you?
Yes, that's who I'm referring to, of another local service organization that may participate
Right.
in the UAS program.
Buy the camera and, but he wants to, and I've suggested to him, and I think you guys have already done it, that we work hand in hand with the fire department
Yes.
on this whole program.
Yes.
Okay.
That way, if we work partnership with the fire district, that allows us to have more pilots trained. Uh, we're able to deploy them more frequently at critical incidents. Uh, if it's a fire structure, we can assist with that. Uh, as, as the fire manpower is probably gonna be used to be fighting the fire, we can assist with that. And if there's a critical incident where we're deploying most of our personnel on perimeters and so forth, if there's an active shooter type thing, we can rely on the fire department to assist us in piloting the aircraft and so forth.
Do those record?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Parks?
I apologize, Chief. I'm gonna be bouncing back and forth between yourself and Mr. Brandon. Mr. Brandon, um, so, once this is deployed, is it the single monitor on, uh, in your office? Where are you guys kind of monitoring it, flying it from? Is it on site?
Uh, so the pilot has a local monitor that's attached to the control unit. And then we've, we've explored some other options. Uh, potentially, a larger monitor nearby where it's deployed for officers that are responding or they're on scene to view and see the video. Uh, there's also capabilities to send video back to the dispatch center or to somewhere else within the police department as well.
Okay, so if Chief needed to tap into, to kind of monitor things, he could get it, he could see what the drone sees. Okay. And then, you said it records video. Is that something that is going to have, does it go directly to our servers that we have here?
The video that's recorded, it's stored just on a removable memory chip.
Oh, okay.
So there's no automatic transfer. We would record that video and retain it, just like we do with all the other video evidence that we record.
So we would follow some of the same procedures, so we would have a backup of it? Or is it just gonna be that single memory, so if that memory thing goes out, it's done?
Uh, we would store it in a backup method
Okay.
as we do other video.
Okay, perfect. So, and then, on your side as well, you're not facing any compatibility issues with equipment or system, anything like that?
No.
Okay, perfect. I just, you know, it's one of those things, you don't know what you don't know. So I want to make sure that you had everything that you needed to to make this thing work, okay? And then, Chief, you and I earlier had talked about, you know, some of the requirements and ongoing training and things like that. And so I just wanted to, you know, kind of give you a chance to elaborate on that and to, you know, just kind of share with the council what you shared with me in terms of the training and those types of things.
Yes, well, as the council may know, any member of the general public can buy one of these at a local store, take it out and fly without any training whatsoever or understanding on how it operates. Uh, we would prescribe to some general training guidelines, kind of mimicking what Modesto Police Department's already been doing and what the FAA recommends. Uh, although there's no set hours, we are talking about putting approximately sixteen hours per pilot into training, familiarization, reviewing of instruction and policy manuals on the aircraft. And so they become proficient and operate the aircraft safely enough before it gets deployed out into a critical incident where it could cause harm to members of our public or general property.
Okay, perfect.
This might sound a little crazy, but is there any way to make this a weapon? Like mount a dart gun or something like that on there?
There's certainly things that people can do with it. There's YouTube videos out there where people have modified it to do certain things. But we would not be looking at modifying it from its original manufacturing specs.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, 'cause I was watching a special the other day where, you know, in these bigger cities, they, they're not, they don't fly, but they, I guess they're robots. And these things have machine guns on them. And, you know, if they got a shooter and it's a dangerous situation, this thing just crawls around the corner and blasts everybody.
Yeah, there's, there's, uh, people that weaponize them. There's also some countries, I believe they're China and Japan, where they have an enormous amount of drones flying around, that they attach nets to them and so forth to capture rogue drones. Uh, we wouldn't be looking at doing anything like that.
Robots next, though.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure, I'm sure if you give those officers some time, they could come up with something.
Go on, no, he's right. Go on, go on and do an internet search, drones and guns, and you'll see all kinds of drones are weaponized. You will.
Yeah. So, we need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll move that we authorize the police department to proceed with the program and accept the donation.
Second.
It passes the five oh vote. And moving on to discussion item one D. Electric motorcycle surplus request. Approved designated two city of Ripon two thousand thirteen Zero DS motorcycles that surplus and authorized the exchange of the two Zero DS motorcycles to the Tracy Police Department and for two two thousand fourteen Harley Davidsons electric glide motorcycles. The exchange would be at no cost to either department. Chief, I guess that's you again.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council. Uh, we recently became aware of another county agency that was surplusing two twenty fifteen Harley Davidson Electra Glides. Uh, and something that we have been, uh, searching for, another application for different types of events, for traffic enforcement, uh, any other type of special operations with our traffic safety grants and so forth. Uh, we were looking for another type of platform that we can utilize and deploy more officers out for specific times. And when that became available, members of our agency had contacted the agency that had these as surplus. And they were actually looking for a different type of platform also, and inquired about our two thousand thirteen Zero DS electric motorcycles. Uh, and we've did a cost comparison. Uh, at this point in time, both the motorcycles, the Electra Glides and the electric motorcycles that we currently possess are about equal in what the, each agency was asking or valuing each of the equipment at. Uh, so at this point in time, uh, we're asking that the two thousand thirteen electric motorcycles that we acquired in two thousand thirteen, we did acquire two more in two thousand fifteen along with the two Can-Am four-wheel, uh, vehicles. Uh, we're asking to surplus the two thousand thirteen electric motorcycles and then effectually swap with the other agency for their two Harleys.
Mr. Restucio?
So Chief, a couple of questions. Um, so an opportunity like this doesn't come along very often to where there's another agency that wants to do a trade, right?
It does come along very often, and it doesn't come along very often where both parties are seeking different platforms. And that the inter-county agencies are able to work out a deal or a trade or a swap of equipment that matches monetarily.
Because what I looked on here, and I don't know if you know anybody that's bought a Tesla, but you know, when you pay a hundred and twenty-five thousand bucks, you get the extended warranty on the battery, because the batteries are like twenty to fifty thousand bucks, and the car is the minimal part of it. Um, these warranties run out in two thousand seventeen, and the batteries are expensive. They're usually the most expensive part of, or big part of the purchase. And so, two thousand seventeen rolls around, we'd probably have to, I mean, if I, what I looked at was the cost of a battery versus, I think there's something that says it costs two hundred dollars more a year to maintain these, oil and whatever you do.
Correct.
Um, so, to me, how old, how many miles on the, on the Harleys? I know it said it in there, I think, but they're fairly new, aren't they?
One has eighty-eight hundred and then eleven thousand.
Yeah, so they're not even broken in yet.
They're just getting it.
Okay. So we get it straight across the capital, straight, and operating expenses, little bit more, not taking into account if we had to go out and buy new batteries. I just want to make sure you understand the math.
Correct.
Okay.
And also, the one thing that we're lacking, we currently have the Honda that was purchased on a OTS grant back in two thousand seven. And it has roughly eighty thousand miles on it. Uh, we do have three operators that are motorcycle qualified within our agency. Uh, only having the one gas motorcycle limits the amount of training they can do and who can do the training. Um, unfortunately, although the Zero Electric Motorcycles are a great platform for what we use them for within our own city, it's very difficult to take them out, training to another jurisdiction, perform the ride or the training ride, and then coming back, unfortunately, the battery life doesn't last that long. Again, great within the city and what we use them for, but there are limitations to them. And acquiring the two gas motorcycles in place of those will help not only the training and the riding skills of our current motor officers or the ones that are authorized to ride, um, but it provides us with countless other possibilities. And also, we still have the two two thousand fifteens that will remain with us in our fleet that we can use for special, um, events such as Fourth of July almond blossom parades and so forth.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but that one that we bought in two thousand seven, ten years, almost ten years ago, has eighty-something thousand miles on it. But that was one that one of our officers used to take home every night, too, so we don't typically put that many miles on it.
Correct.
Wasn't that officer going to back and forth to Turlock at the time or something?
Uh, that was true, but we also had, for three years, we had a dedicated traffic officer because of the grant. So the, the officer was riding it every day of his, of his work shift. So that did put more miles on it than we were currently put on. Uh, right now, we're probably, would deploy a motorcycle, depending on manpower, maybe three to four times a month.
So realistically, these should last an awful long time, and you change a clutch here and there or some brakes or something, but that's probably about it, because we're not gonna put that many miles on them, so. And I think, I don't know anything about Harleys, other than my wife won't let me have one, but they're supposedly pretty good motorcycles, I guess.
I guess my, my only thing would be two observations. Are we gonna do some kind of an inspection on what we're getting?
Yeah, I'm sure there would be an inspection both ways, to make sure that they're getting what they're expecting and we're getting what we're expecting.
And then the Harleys, I'm gonna guess they're way more powerful than the electric motorcycle, so for pursuits and stuff like that, it would be a way more effective ride, right?
Uh, for your top end, actually, from, from zero to probably forty, you probably have the electric motorcycles are actually more quicker.
But if you got on a freeway chase, that electric motorcycle is gonna be.
Correct.
Right?
Your, your top end speeds are probably about seventy to seventy-five.
I have one last question or concern or request. My neighbors have them, and I can hear them coming from the freeway, because those things are loud. These things aren't like the regular ones. These things have mufflers, the way they're, I mean, they're not quite like your electrics, but they're like normal motorcycles, right?
Correct. They don't have any aftermarket exhaust.
Those are all aftermarket, these big loud Harleys that shake and vibrate and make all that noise?
Most of them are.
Oh. Good, thank you.
No questions? Call for a vote?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the request of the chief to do this exchange and whatever else authority you need to make the transaction work. Thanks, guys.
Also pass this is five oh. That's it? We don't get to talk about anything else?
Talk about anything you want, but I'm not sitting here.
You can.